Yeah, we assume enough was mentioned.
There you go. Yes, you're probably right.
Mm-hmm.
Something wrong here.
Right, all right.
Yep.
Are we ready?
Ready where you are.
Okay, good evening. The September 2025 session of the City of Bowling Green Zoning Board of Appeals is now in session. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Oh, that's me. Um, sorry, I forgot that was my duty, sir.
That's been a while, I know.
Jerry Anderson.
Here.
Julie Broadwell.
Here.
Jeff Crawford.
Here.
Tim Emmerich.
Here.
Rod Noble.
Here.
David Flagler.
Here.
Oh, he isn't there.
A quorum is present.
And Jay Sockman.
Here.
I knew you were here. A quorum is present. The First Order of Business is approval of the minutes from the August 2025 meeting. As circulated, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Is there a motion for approval?
I will so move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Sockman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. First of all, welcome to all of you. And let me say that we understand that being here and requesting a variance and the concept of zoning can be something difficult, especially when the city is trying to tell you what you can or can't do with your property. That in mind, I'd like to encourage you to feel at ease. We are your fellow citizens here, volunteering our time, and we're generally nice people. And we just hope that we'll be able to come to some agreement and allow for you to do with your property what you you hope to do through your variance request this evening. Our zoning code was updated recently, a couple of years ago, and it does provide a process for allowing projects that don't strictly conform to the rules set forth in the zoning code. Excuse me. In order for your variance to be granted, we need your help. It's up to you to show us that your request meets the criteria provided in the code. And that involves a couple of things. First, you need to show us credible evidence that strict enforcement of the code would cause you a practical difficulty. And practical difficulty is something that we struggle with. It's something that's unique to your situation, that justifies the granting of a variance. It's not just that you have too many cars to park in your driveway, or that your, you know, your yard's not private enough, those kinds of things. It needs to be something that's unique to your situation, like the size of your lot, or the slope of your lot, or those sorts of things that aren't within your control that cause a practical difficulty. You can do this by helping us out in your testimony this evening, by being mindful of the seven criteria that were in the application package that you received, that we need to look at and find exist or not as part of being able to grant your variance. As we proceed, I will read the requests in the order that they are shown on the agenda. The city's planning director will then give an overview of the situation and talk a little bit about the applicable sections of the zoning code. You'll be invited then to come up to the podium. We ask that you speak into the microphone, state your name and address, and tell us again what your practical difficulty is that brings you here this evening requesting the variance. If anyone else who would like to speak will then be allowed to testify, either in support or against your request. Then at the appropriate time, we'll close the public comment part of this proceeding, and you'll be able to go back and take your seat at that time. And the board will discuss the request. Members may ask for explanations, have questions for you at that time. And then after our deliberations, we can either approve your request, deny your request, approve it with conditions, or table it for further information. Appeals to decisions by the board can be made to the Wood County Court of Common Pleas, and as such, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding. This is being recorded, and in case of necessity, there would be a transcript made by a court reporter, a verbatim transcript of the proceedings. And if you have not already, please sign in at the door. There's a sign-in sheet back there. And as I said, it's a quasi-judicial proceeding, and as such, we ask that you swear your oath to tell the truth as you testify before us tonight. So at this point, if you plan to or think you might testify, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you will give in these matters tonight is the truth, will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth will help you guys?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. The first request is, actually, the first, Brandon Flick, 887 West Wooster Street, has asked that his request be taken off tonight's agenda and considered at a later meeting. So the next is Scott and Michelle, is it Rail?
Right.
Rail. 985 West Wooster have requested a variance to allow the construction of a six-foot-tall fence, which has already been constructed, which would extend past the front-facing elevation of the principal structure on the adjacent lot to the east. Heather, can you tell us what's going on with this one, please?
Good evening. I'm actually going to have our senior planner, Chase Fletcher, give you the history of this property, and I will chime in if you have any questions that I can help with.
Okay, Chase.
All right. So as Mr. Noble said, they're requesting the construction of a six-foot-tall fence. And I'm going to go through the PowerPoint here. It is governed by Section 150.79 under fences. A fence shall not exceed heights indicated in Table 25. Table 25 of Section 150.79, for a side yard, six-foot-tall max, fences of more than four feet in height in the side yard may not be extended closer to the street right-of-way than the front-facing elevation of any principal structure on the lot or the adjacent lot. Here in this image, if you take a look, the red line is where the fence currently is, and the yellow line is the front-facing elevation of the house to the east of it. So that is the line which a fence cannot go past being six feet tall. This drawing was done after the fact of the fence was put up. This is an aerial image of the property. Here we have, using pictometry, we have other images of the property. And then this is a letter that was from our code enforcement officer, Jason West, up into the record. Below is background information regarding to the request for the new fence at 985 West Wooster Street, which was constructed prior to, prior to the permit, October 11th of 2024 through December 11th of 2025. Started working with contractor for fence permit application, which ended up being constructed without a permit. Staff worked with the contractor to get the proper sketch during this time period, which included the need for a variance. The contractor applied for a variance on December 22nd, 2024. January 8th, 2025, zoning board of appeals did not approve the requested variance. See attached Exhibit A. Since the variance originally requested was not approved, the city has been in contact with the owners, who hired an attorney to assist with resolving the current fence violation. The property owners applied for a variance and submitted an amended sketch on July 31st, 2025, which is the request you have on the agenda for today's meeting. Respectfully, Jason Westgate, zoning code enforcement officer. That is some of the history of the background of this property. Here, we also have more images of the property, as the fence is currently. And these are trees that are on the south side of the fence. And these were images, I believe, that were submitted by the property owners of the inside of the fence. And this was the sketch that was submitted for review today. As you can see, the fence was previously put up. The section in yellow is the area that has changed. They have cut the corners in to make it not squared, and that is the changes that were made. And we received one email in regard to the subject. Greetings, council board members. My name is Thomas Gurkin. I am the neighbor to the west of, is it Rail?
Yes.
Rail, okay. The Rail residents, I have no opposition to their request for variance. They should be allowed to have their fence. Sincerely, Thomas Gurkin. That was from Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025. Oh. And advertisement was placed in the newspaper of general circulation as required. A site notice was placed at the site. The other notices required by the administrative code were posted in proper time and location. A letter was mailed, first-class mail, to the tax mailing address of the owner and adjoining property owners. Therefore, all procedural requirements for this hearing have been met.
Thank you, Chase. Who will be speaking for the Rails?
I'll start.
You'll state your name and your address for the record, please.
Hi, I am Michelle Rail. So I'm the property owner. I also have with me Douglas Ruck, who is, has been my counsel for this last year.
What was the, what was his name?
Doug Ruck. Douglas Ruck.
Okay, will you affirm for me that you swore your oath to tell the truth?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, tell us what's going on, and as I mentioned several times, we're looking for that practical difficulty issue.
Absolutely. So again, my name's Michelle Rail. My husband and I are the property owners at 985 West Wooster Street. Just wanted to give you a little update here. My anxiety is pretty high about this whole situation, so I am going to read something I prepared, if that's okay.
Like I said, please feel at ease. We're, we're your fellow citizens, and we want to help you out if we can.
I'm just very anxious. I appreciate it, thank you, though. Okay. It's been a rough year. So for me, the backyard has always been a place of peace. Somewhere I could come home after work. I could center myself, recharge myself, especially for the past six years in caring for my mother's battle with dementia. She passed last August, 2024. And in that space, our backyard became such a special place for me to be able to go outside and really connect, or it should have been. I was not able to do so, which is the biggest problem and why I asked to find a contractor and did some due diligence. Did, I did my best to find a contractor that was actually going to do the right thing. But because of safety concerns with the long-term renters on Wilson Avenue, and some threats they've made against us, comments they've made, if we spent any time in our backyard before the fence was built, we were just barraged with Facebook message threats. They stand outside and smoke their marijuana, unfortunately, berating somebody over the phone on a daily basis. This has been going on for the three years that they've been there. But because of their safety concerns, I decided to take the little tiny bit of money my mom left me and regain my backyard and have some privacy and be able to just go out and enjoy nature again. You know, I'm a Gen Xer, so I got to go out and I'm the one who, who, you know, played in the backyard all the time and drank from the hose and all of those fun things. So this is my special place. I did tell the contractor multiple times, I have it in writing, that I told him that I did not want him to touch my property and put a fence in until he had the proper permit. He assured me he would. I was going through the process of grieving my mom, trying to set up a memorial. That's neither here nor there, except that is just the facts of kind of where I was at that time. So he came in, he assured me that he had the permit, everything was good. It was just before my mom's memorial that I was trying to plan on Central Ohio. I trusted him, I believed him, and I didn't have the time or the mental energy to follow up with him. And apparently, he did not. And I found that out about six or seven weeks after he actually constructed that fence through violation notice. Immediately contact the city. I've been trying to be in compliance this entire time. I did not want this to happen, ever. Reached out to the contractor at that time. He promised me that he would take care of this, that he would apply for the variance, which he did. He paid for it. He, in a public hearing, admitted that he made, it was his mistake, 100%. But I'm the victim. I'm the one still dealing with this. I'm embarrassed by his behavior, his lack of preparation, and the fact that I didn't realize he wasn't prepared in that last meeting. I felt like I was really taken advantage of, and all I was trying to do was do the right thing and be able to enjoy my property. Soon after that meeting, I did seek counsel and hired Doug Ruck, who's here to kind of support me through the process, too, and help me with this. So he's, I think, willing and able to maybe give you some more information that maybe my anxiety won't allow me to give you right now.
Okay, Mr. Ruck.
Thank you so much.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, I'm Doug Ruck. I'm not a Bowling Green resident. Well, I guess I do have property here in town, but 4613 Swan Road, Pemberville.
Okay, you can affirm for me that you swore your oath to tell the truth?
Yes, I certainly did.
Thank you.
So yeah, I'm the attorney referred to in the letter that Ms. Sawyer's read there, who got the call out of the blue that, hey, I got this notice, I could get fined $500 a day. So I think Michelle was, I guess, trying to at least address the initial problem here that there's a fence already built, which clearly is violation, no question. Yeah, I mean, it is. So I sort of reached out and I've had some discussions with the city attorney to say, you know, all right, what can we do here? Those discussions are what led to this new application for variance. And two things that I now wish I had maybe helped her include in there, or maybe pointed out further, one was the picture a couple back that shows, really a lot better than drawings and sketches can, maybe, yeah, kind of that picture, showing what the landscaping and where the fence kind of hits it. And the second thing, which we, I guess we didn't really adequately address, is that, I mean, typically, we'd be asking for a variance of only two feet in height around that area that extends around. Because we could build, if I understand, if I read the code correctly, you could put a four-footer there. I mean, we could literally go out with a chainsaw and cut down to, that's how we deal with things in Pemberville, of course. So addressing the, you know, the hardship, I guess, stems from the fact that it is an unusual lot, and you see this occasionally when the lots are, you know, reversed ninety degrees. The, the, you know, I've always sort of understood, and I mean, I've done a fair amount of municipal work myself, the idea, what you're trying to avoid, I think it was shown on one of the sketches there, is going down the street, you can't have fences that go out past people's houses all the way out to the sidewalk or right-of-way, because it looks ridiculous. This, what Michelle is proposing, doesn't really do that. I mean, it essentially just kind of backstops the landscaping that's already there. The suggestion to cut the corners is to, I guess, soften that, you know, a couple pictures back, sorry to be constantly directing you down there, kind of soften that hard corner there, but then it also, the concern you would have, I would think, is the property to the east there. You know, when you sit on the porch, you don't want to be looking over and see a fence here and a fence here that blocks your view down the street. Well, cutting that corner would, I think, kind of largely ameliorate that. I can tell you, the property to the east is owned by Ed Powers, and that's where he grew up. I did talk to him a couple days ago, as you might imagine. I mean, probably all of you know him, I'm guessing. He's in the heat of the battle, the asphalt plants are closing in three or four weeks, and he's very busy. I, he did authorize me to relate to you. He's, he's not objecting to it or expressing any real opinion. If I could characterize, his position is, hey, whatever keeps my tenants and their neighbors, you know, happy is fine with me. So I think, you know, as you go down the factors there, it's not really a substantial variance in that it could be four feet and it would be fine. It's, you know, there's clearly other uses of the property. This property does not become unsealable or even unusable. It certainly becomes something less for the Rails, but the first factor I don't think is a slam dunk at all. I think what I really would focus on is the, you know, you don't want to be going around willy-nilly giving out variances that then change. The whole point of zoning is to have a neighborhood character and a look and an aesthetic, and I think that's the third factor in the code. And I don't think that really substantially alters at all the, the property, or really significantly impacts the adjoining property there. So Michelle, I guess, is prepared to, you know, take any further questions. We weren't sure two hours ago whether she'd be able to speak here today, so, I mean, she's being honest that she's extremely anxious about this, you know, has some unrelated health issues which can affect even the ability to spit her words out sometimes. So I guess I'm not really here necessarily as her counsel. That's going to be later, and I really appreciate that you've documented in the public records that this contractor did this, because that's going to be Exhibit A. I'm, I guess, more here to just help her facilitate and get her words out and guide her to answer any questions you might have, so have at it.
Okay. I, I usually don't generally speak first, but I'm going to in this case. And Ms. Rail, I'm totally sympathetic to your loss, and I'm, as we said last time, I'm very sorry for your loss. I'm dealing with a mother who has dementia myself right now, so I, I can relate a little bit. That said, the, the last time you were here, we turned down your request, as you know, for some, what we felt were some sound reasons. I feel like, Mr. Ruck, I, this to me looks a little bit like an attempt to maybe circumvent that prior decision by bringing in a slightly altered plan that enables you to come back to us and take another bite. And as far as I'm concerned, this, as I said the last time, this to me is a substantial variance, and it does change the character of the neighborhood. I'm not telling you how I'm going to vote, and I'm going to listen to my fellow board members, but I want to get this out on the table of where this seems to be going, in my opinion. I think that your understanding of the code, I don't agree with, that it's designed to prevent a row of homes with encroaching fences. I think it's maybe almost the opposite. I think it's any encroachment, one maybe worse than all in this, in this instance. So I'm not, I'm not really into that argument. I do think, as I said, this is a substantial variance. It hasn't changed from last time in a material way. It does, in my opinion, alter the character of the neighborhood. And I think as far as what might possibly be done to obviate the situation with alternatives is to deal with the landlord and the tenants, you know, if they're disturbing the peace and that sort of thing. I think you have some evidence.
We've tried. Nothing will be done unless they do something to us physically.
And then the other thing is, is creating that, that island of unusable space. As Mr. Ruck said, a four-foot fence would solve that. So those are my comments. I'm, I said, my mind's not made up. I'm going to listen to my fellow board members. The issue of the lack of permit, I think last time, as I recall, there was some, a little bit of dragging of the feet in responding to the city, and I understand that you were in a, not a good place at that time, and I could kind of excuse that. I think it was what's alluded to, you know, the onus of getting a permit is on you as the property owner, and I know for some of us, things that get built, and then people come in here and ask us for forgiveness rather than permission, that doesn't really go over very well. So.
I understand.
I apologize for the long-windedness, but with the history of this, I wanted to get that out. And again, I'm not telling you how I'm going to vote, and those are just my thoughts.
I understand, thank you.
So you're, I'm sorry, my turn to jump in. You're still going, will have the six-foot fence to the, some of the property to the back, correct?
Yes.
Then, you know, so you're still going to have your privacy from your neighbors there with the six-foot fence in the back?
Yes. Yeah, that's the goal is.
Yes, and it's still going to be there. The other thing's going to be four-foot. If, if, you know, when I'm saying four-foot, and if I remember right, then the contractor said he would take care of it. That's what he said. I know, and that was one of the reasons that we kind of, well, I, that, last time I voted, I believe I voted no, I'm almost sure I did, because that contractor said he was going to take care of it, too.
That contractor has basically disappeared now.
Yeah, I understand that. Which I'm sorry, sorry for that.
Can I ask a question to Heather? This would be in compliance if they moved that six-foot portion back in with the front of the house on, is it Wilson?
Yeah.
Yeah, correct, if it was in line with the house, right.
So they could still, in theory, have a six-foot fence surrounding the house. It would just be a smaller.
Correct.
Right.
Where that dotted line goes.
Yeah, so how many feet is that, do we know?
It's, I think, about 20 feet, 20, 21 feet, which is more than a third of the yard would be. It also would cut through our garden that we've built a wall, a little raised wall that you saw in one of the pictures. And it doesn't, it's not going to remove any of the landscaping that's already there in the back. Those trees have been there for 20-plus years, or those bushes have been there for longer than that.
That's, that's why I was saying the four-foot fence, I mean, you still got a pretty good blockage of trees going along that.
To the back. My biggest concern really is that side. They sit in that window.
Okay. And you'd still have the six-foot, you'd still have the six-foot fence there.
For a portion of it, not for all of it.
Part of the reason that I supported this request as it was presented the last time was because my logic was if they moved that, they, if they moved that back, they still have a six-foot fence in their side yard. It didn't, to me, make that big, it's, you still have, if the neighbor didn't like that, they're still looking at a six-foot fence in, around the property, except for the, that 20-foot area.
So then that just, I mean, on my, in my, like, feasibly, like, what do they then do with 20-some feet of yard that people are going to walk through? The people are going to already be, we already have those neighbors trying to walk through anyway, they're walk their dog over, and it poops in our grass near the fence, beside the fence, like, it doesn't keep us safe. It doesn't keep my daughter safe.
Is the property that's giving you the hassle the one due east, straight east, the one on Wilson?
Yes.
If you look at it, the six-foot fence cuts off right there. If you're standing and looking out your window, the window, the, the six-foot fence would cover the entire side of that house. There's no way they could look in unless you're looking over six foot anyway.
Their driveway, their front yard, they don't have much of a backyard. They spend a lot of time in their front yard.
You would still, and you also, can you show the picture on Wilson? Shows the vegetation. That's a substantial amount of vegetation that covers the front of that, just the one small corner, is where they would be able to look in from the other, it will be the other side of that, right there.
It's that entire side, that they will stand out in that yard.
David, if I can build on maybe what you're saying, is the six-foot fence is there now. It has been there for some time, and the problem still exists, so making it legal's not going to change that.
No, 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 I understand, but what I'm saying, if it were taken down to four-foot, and, and if we, if she's having such problems with the, the property next door and the renters, have you contacted the property owners?
Yes.
And say, okay, this is what we're problem.
He does not care.
And document it completely through the police department and such?
He does not care. Yes, I have called the police on multiple occasions, and every time I do, I get a Facebook threat from the renters, physically threatening, threatening us. I just want to be in my backyard. I, I had no idea this was an issue, or I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have dealt with this. We may have just moved, I may have died at Bowling Green for that matter. I really just want to have a yard that we can use, and we are the only property in that entire two-section block that has, I believe, I think, I could be wrong, there might be one or two more, but we're the only one with a double lot. Everybody else has a single lot, and their backyards face one another, all down, all down Wilson and Wooster, all down Sunset and Wilson.
Julie, any comments, questions?
I'm really sorry when you have neighborhood difficulties like this. I mean, I'm not downplaying that whatsoever, but I would have to vote against this because it does substantially change the neighborhood. I'm just wondering if you can't go the civil route or something in regards to your neighbors, which is not for us to decide or anything, but, I mean, it just sounds like a terrible living situation for you.
Especially if you've got Facebook posts threatening you.
We have got evidence.
Again, we're not for civil, that's not for us to lie.
I've contacted the police. They said they will, nothing can be done until they physically do something to us. They don't care about Facebook threats. I was putting that on record. This seemed to be reasonable to me, and, and again, trying to go through the process and making sure that we had the proper permit, which is what I asked for from the beginning.
Yeah, and I, I totally, there's, I don't think it would be just to hold that against you, because I do 100% believe you that the contract said, yeah, we're good to go, and then turns out, you know, we weren't. So I don't think it is a significant change. You're allowed to have a four-foot fence, you want a six-foot fence, there's mitigating landscaping, they've taken mitigating steps to try to reduce the angles on the landscaping, they've taken mitigating steps to try to reduce the angles on the corner, and I guess I don't, what characteristic of the neighborhood did it change, I guess, is what I'd ask, because I really don't think that it's changed the character of the neighborhood at all, really. So I was before it the first time, and I think I'm even like more for it this time, so that's, that's where I'm at on it.
Okay. Jerry?
Yeah, a couple of things. Michelle, first of all, I'm sorry for your loss. Thank you for being here today. Thank you for your willingness to amend things. You are a victim in this, you sought permits. I'll have questions for our planning department. Do we know this ARV Ventures? I'm going to be asking you about that. Is this a frequent flyer on this? I'm new to this board, as you know, and I don't like this idea of people getting, just going ahead and building stuff and then saying, hey, we'll go up and ask forgiveness, but that's not what you wanted to do, you were asking for. That's right. Also, I appreciate this view right here, Chase, because when I was reading about this today, we don't want to have in this city a place where you, where you can go to your front porch and not see anything but wooden fences. But look at this, because I was out there today, I'm not worried about the west side of their property or the east side of yours. Who's going to stand in that narrow piece of land on the side of the building unless they're out there smoking dope, and I don't care about them anyway? But from their front porch, from their front porch, when I was out there today, you have to look for the fence. It's tucked in behind all these trees. And I just, if that's what it takes, you didn't seek to thumb your nose at the city zoning I do see moving that over, you're going to have this whole chunk of land out there that is just space, that won't be really usable for you. And I just think that in the spirit, if this were just putting up big fences and creating fortresses, I can easily be against that. I am not against this.
Anything else from the board? Anyone in the lobby care to address this?
I would just say one more quick thank you.
Sure.
I just wanted to address the idea, or the, your concern. I can understand a little heartburn that, you were already here on this thing. This is in some extent asking for a second bite of the apple, but it's because the first one was done by this person you rightly asked about, that, I mean, I'm going to be finding out all of those things in a lawsuit very soon. So the, the reason we're here is when I, when, you know, when I look at this and what happened, and then I'm like, wow, they probably were right, that's, if you read the code, that's what it says. You know, we're here in direct consultation with the city attorney, who said, why don't you come up with something that, I mean, he and I more or less put half a dozen options together. This was the one that seemed the most sort of reasonable, practical, but yet not going to cost an arm and a leg to the landowner. So that, that's the only reason we're here. We're not trying to, you know, just keep running back and back and back, and wasting everyone's time and insulting your intelligence. And certainly, she's not doing that. I mean, sometimes attorneys do that despite their best efforts, but I just wanted to let you know that for sure, so, thank you.
I have one last question, and I guess this is for Chase and Heather. The side yard is, the side fence is also six feet. I thought a side lot had to be four feet. No? Okay.
I also feel a need to clarify my positions. I think it got confused. My logic was, if they move this in compliance, that did not, as a six, they can move it, and it'll be, still be a six-foot fence in the side yard. That to me is, that to me puts it over the top that I would support it as is, because that doesn't make a substantial difference to me if you move that thing, if you make her move that thing back, and it's in compliance, she still has a six-foot fence in her side yard.
She doesn't want to move it.
I'm in, to be clear, I'm in support of this.
What, what characteristic of the neighborhood has been changed? I mean, we actually kind of get a little bit of advantage on this one, because there's been a pilot program in place for the last, you know, six months or whatever, and has there been any complaints to the city about the fence?
Not that I'm aware of.
So are we just like enforcing the code, just enforcing the code? Like, it just doesn't seem significant to me.
Well, think about if these neighbors weren't causing a problem, why, I mean, if someone else moves in there, why should they have their view blocked by this six-foot fence?
Yeah, no.
I think we have to go past if it's just troublesome neighbors, and when you, I mean, you look at it, and it, people sitting on their front porch do see this huge fence. It is, it is different. I mean, you can't just go sit out on your porch, you are seeing this huge fence that's there, and bringing it back would be in compliance. And, you know, Michelle was saying they would lose 21 feet, which, that's the difficulty. I mean, I'm not saying that this whole thing was handled right, I'm really sorry about that, but I do think for that house on Wilson Street, that is, that is a substantial change. I don't know why all those trees are in back, but that's not what we're here for either.
One quick addition, if I, if I may, I think one of the drawings that I submitted, I don't know which one, actually shows that we talked about in talking with Mr. Ruck and the city attorney, we're willing to put landscaping all around. If you look at the picture with the mailbox right there, so we just recently found out, we thought we were giving about a two-foot-ish strip of land between our fence and the property line. It actually ends up being closer, I think it's closer to eight foot, five, eight feet, because that post for that is actually, the pin was found recently by the city workers, not me, and they told us that that all is our property from the mailboxes over. We have more than enough room to put bushes, to put anything to soften that look. I am happy to do that. Anything to make it, that would also help reduce some of the sound and the noise that comes from the neighbors as well. But as Mr. Ruck said, Eddie Powers, the owner of that house, has no, no position on it. He is not opposed to this, so.
Are you talking about the clipped corners landscaping there?
Yes. Yeah, there is already landscaping on the opposite corner. This one, we would add some, there are trees, there's, there's a couple of trees, but we would add more landscaping to make it more appealing on the other end, if we're allowed to do this.
Any other questions for Mrs. Rail? Okay, we kind of extended the comment period, so we'll close that now, and I guess since I went first before, after hearing all of you and your comments and concerns, I could be persuaded to, to be in favor of this if, if the applicant could agree to, and I'm going to suggest a minimum of, my day job is doing this a little bit, so half a dozen four-foot arborvitae on the east side. I think the west side doesn't appear to be an issue to me, but clipped the corners, as you've requested, and half a dozen at least four-foot arborvitae, and it might do you some good, as they grow up too, because they're going to grow higher than six feet, so.
That's another thing we talked, yes.
So that's, that's where I am. Anybody else? Are you talking about all the way along the fence line? Or just that clipped corner? Well, let me be more specific. Where they're taking out, it looks like two sections of fence to round off basically that corner. So if, if we could do, say, three on that clipped side, and then three on the east-facing side, going back to the, to the north.
We did consider actually putting them all down, the entire fence, but.
That'd be better.
I mean, that, yeah, that was the thought process, to really soften the whole thing. I mean, we don't want it to be a nice store, we really don't.
So that's, that's my final thoughts.
I'm on the fence on this one a little bit, but Jeff made a good point with, with the whole, you know, she moves it over 20-foot, I mean, she's really going to lose a lot of her yard, a lot of her space, but there's not going to be, be a little bit of difference in the house, and that, the homeowner doesn't seem to care, so, I don't know.
What do you mean by the homeowner?
The, Eddie Powers.
And he would have been notified twice.
Yes.
Right, and had an opportunity to.
Right.
Yes.
Two times.
Correct.
At all, correct?
Correct.
I also feel like we have to be careful about suggesting the.
Planning?
Our, the landscaping, what they should put in. Is that our?
Sure.
That's, okay.
You can ask them to amend, oh, with this condition. Terry?
I think this is one of those times where you said you could vote yes, no, or yes with consideration. I think this is a yes with consideration, as stated by you with the arborvitae, which our, our person, thank you, Michelle, has been, and I think the history tells us that the track record is there, they're willing to do that.
Yes, with a condition.
Yes.
Tim?
That, I think it's a good compromise.
David?
I'm in agreement with the compromise, and it would help cut down on some of the noises they talk. We've used that on some of my properties, and it is very effective.
Julie?
I'd still be a no.
Okay. All right, any, anything else? If not, is there a motion for the disposition of this request?
I so moved with, with the arborvitae six, would you say, six of them?
Yeah, three, three along the, I'll call it the clipped corner, and three on the east face, clipped corner going north.
Can you just second for Jay?
Yes.
I would second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the variance request be approved with the condition that three minimum four-foot-high arborvitae be planted along the quote-unquote clipped section of the fence to the east, and another three minimum four-foot arborvitae along the east-facing fence going north from the clipped section of the fence. Now, that didn't confuse everybody, I hope.
I wrote it down.
All right. Mr. Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Julie Broadwell?
No.
Jeff Crawford?
Yes.
Tim Emmerich?
Yes.
Rod Noble?
Yes.
David Flager?
Yes.
Chase Ockman?
Yes.
Jerry Anderson?
Yes.
I'm sorry to have put you through this again, but your variance has been approved with that condition, and wish you all the best.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your considered discourse here after what happened today nationally. It's nice that we can still do this here. Also, a nice dig you have here. I haven't been here since, I used to have an office.
Thank you.
You did right.
Thank you. Okay, next request, Benjamin Maxwell, 922 Morning Dove Lane, has requested a variance to allow the construction of a six-foot-tall fence in the front yard, which is a corner lot. The fence would be along the front yard facing Crim Street, which would be two feet taller than the four-foot maximum height allowed. Heather or Chase, one of you care to give us the rundown here?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Noble. Okay, so as you said, the gentleman is requesting a six-foot-tall fence. Again, fences are governed by Section 150.79 fences, except for when fences are required by the zoning code for screen. A fence shall not exceed heights indicated in Table 25, Table 25, front yard, four-foot max. So this property, as you can see from this aerial image, is on the corner of Morning Dove Lane and Crim Street. The section that we're talking about is on the east side of the property, and since it's on a corner lot, it technically has two front yards. That is why it's limited on one side to four feet, that we're, they're requesting for six feet. Here is another image of the home on the corner. This is from the east, west, north, that's a corner image. But this section here on the side, that is the area that they are requesting. And this image here shows the section, it's 50 feet of fence along Crim Street, and then that additional 14 feet also on Crim Street that comes in a little bit. Those are the areas that they're requesting to be six feet tall instead of four feet We received no letters in regards to this. An advertisement was placed in the newspaper of general circulation as required. A site notice was placed at the site. The other notices required by the administrative code were posted in proper time and location. A letter was mailed first class to the tax mailing address of the owner and adjoining property owners. Therefore, all procedural requirements of this hearing have been met.
Thank you. Mr. Maxwell, I assume, please speak into the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Benjamin Maxwell, 922 Morning Dove Lane.
Confirm for me that you swore your oath to tell the truth.
Yes, I do.
Okay. You would tell us what you would like to do, and bear in mind this practical difficulty issue that we need to address.
Yeah, so from the other three sides of the property, so that'd be the west side, south side, and north side, I have approval for the six-foot fence. This 50-foot and 14-foot section is along Crim Street. The house that would be to the east of that, they do already have a split rail fence with wire up between it. I have a dog, this is my first house I've purchased. I was unaware of this six-foot rule, being a technical two front yards. I guess my worry is my dog being outside, either jumping the fence or barking at the other dog all day, causing more difficulty than good than just having a six-foot fence instead of a four-foot fence.
How tall is, how tall is the fence across the street from you, the, the split rail with the wire?
I would assume four-foot. I haven't put a tape measure to it, though. And then again, I mean, just overall privacy, I'm doing the rest of it six-foot. This would be the section at four-foot. I know it's not the practical difficulty, but this Crim Street is a dead-end street with absolutely no residents on it. The only other driveway off this street or housing on this street is a gabled barn. That'd be to the southeast of my property, and that's all I have.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Maxwell?
Can we go back to the view, a street-level view? Yeah, something more, yeah, go back one. Okay. So the, the side that faces Morning Dove is going to have a six-foot fence?
I'm Crim.
No, I'm, no, this is what he's asking for. What's going to be, what is facing Morning Dove?
Like, the awning, that is Morning Dove.
Will there be a fence on that side?
On the opposite side, towards the gray house, there'll be one running towards his split rail, or chain-link fence, then back.
But he doesn't need a permit for that. He doesn't need.
So the six-foot fence would run between the garage and the side of the house?
And the side of the house.
It would, it would go straight and then cut into the house before the utilities.
No fence along Morning Dove?
Not in the front yard, no.
Gotcha.
No, no, no.
Yeah, you're stuck with two front yards, aren't you, Benjamin? Because I'm out there today, and I'm saying the front of that house faces Morning Dove.
Yes.
But you are being asked to abide by the other front yard?
Yes.
Gotcha.
And that garage is yours, correct?
That is my garage, yes.
What kind of dog do you have?
Good question. He's a rescue, so he's currently living with my parents' house until I kind of figure this all out, so I can bring him there, but he, he's a lab mix with something.
Benjamin, could a, could a four-foot fence contain him?
I don't know, I've seen him jump them before, to be honest. The chain-link, not a, not a privacy fence, but he's part kangaroo, I'm concerned.
Any other questions?
I'm just going to make a comment. There's a house on, I think it's Enterprise, not Summit, and they're a corner lot, and they have a six-foot fence, and then the side that's on Enterprise is four feet, and they have two dogs that stand on their hind feet and bark, but it's in compliance and it looks really nice, you can, so I think having the four-foot on streets, I mean, it's unfortunate, but some people buy corner lots, and what the zoning code says is four feet if you're on a corner lot for that side. And I mean, it's, the house I'm talking about looks really nice, and they just moved in a little while ago. in a little while ago. But I guess if it's a dog situation, it'll be a dog situation that you'll need to factor in there. But I would say that it needs to be a four-foot fence. Side.
I can caveat onto that because I do, I live off of Ridge and Prospect and I've got one that's kangaroo, too. And we have a four-foot fence and it's a chain link fence. So what we've done is just put a little interior barrier to divert them, keep them away from getting at that fence. So, and it, to make it, and it can made to be looked nice using vegetation and all inside of there, but it will contain them.
Okay. Understood.
Any other questions for Mr. Maxwell? You can have a seat and we will close the, or anyone else care to make a comment, question? Okay, we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and discussion amongst the board members. Anybody else have any comments, thoughts?
I myself.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have too much of a problem with this one because I think it's far back from the intersection where it's not going to pose a problem. It's not really posing a problem to any other property owner because there's no other house, you know, behind him or, you know, he's got a street to the other side of him. So, you know, he wants some privacy back there, probably have, you know, sit around and have a fire. See, he's got a fire pit back there, so. I don't have too much of a problem. I don't think it's really going to be out of line.
Can I ask a question for clarification? Even though Benjamin sat down, no other house faces Crim Street in that section from Morning Dove South. Is that correct?
No, like I said.
Come up to the microphone.
I'm sorry, Benjamin, I put you in that position.
No, no, you're fine. So to the southeast of my property, the only driveway or housing that relately touches it is a gabled barn. You can see the corner of it in the photo.
I see the gabled barn to the lower left there.
Yeah. Yep, right there. So the lot behind me is an empty lot, too, owned by the people next to it. So there's no housing there either.
But the six-foot fence would face the property to the east then?
To Crim.
To Crim, the other side, that house.
That is correct, yes.
Anyone else, final thoughts? This reminds me of a request that we approved last year at the corner of Winter Garden and Burgoyne. It's a corner lot in the same configuration and we allowed that six-foot fence in the side yard and quite frankly, it looks terrible. And I wish I'd have voted no on that one.
I agree.
We don't operate under precedent. I realize that. I'm just going by the visual that I have of that one at the corner of Burgoyne and Winter Garden. I also feel like the neighbor across Crim Street has a four-foot fence. And I'm afraid I'm just not seeing the practical difficulty here on this one and I'm not going to be able to support it. Any others, final thoughts?
Benjamin, how do you feel about putting up a four-foot fence? You're just saying you need to get your dog better trained?
Yeah, I mean, I'm able, I mean, put up the fence myself, no matter what. I can put up a four-foot privacy fence. I'd rather not to keep it consistent with the rest of the backyard and for foot traffic walking by, whatnot, it's actually a private backyard. But yeah, I understand I bought this property unknowing of the city rules, so, yeah.
The majority of it is six-foot, just that small other front yard is the difficulty. Everything else is your six-foot legal, except for that one small section.
That is correct.
From the garage forward to the house and then over.
Yeah, the proposed fence, that's what it would, yeah.
But that small section measures, where's my good diagram? How many?
Fifty. Fifty.
It's 50 and 14, isn't it?
64, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's 64 feet, okay. That's what I thought.
You can go back to your seat.
Okay. And by the way, thank you for buying a house in Bowling Grain.
Yeah.
graduate. I love the city.
There you go. Thanks, Benjamin.
To me, making this a four-foot fence does not make it, you know, it's still a fence on the side yard. So I have no problem with it as it's presented.
Okay. Anyone care to make a motion on the disposition of this case?
So moved. I moved that it's, we approve it as presented.
Second?
Second.
Who's that?
Moved by Mr. Crawford, seconded by Mr. Flieger that the variance request be approved as submitted. Any further discussion? Mr. Secretary, call the roll, please.
Jerry Anderson?
Yes.
Julie Broadwell?
No.
Jeff Crawford?
Yes.
Tim Emmerich?
Yes.
Rod Noble?
No.
David Flager?
No.
Jay Sockman? I'm going to say no, honest.
Sorry, Mr. Maxwell, your request was not approved. Reminder, you have the option to go to the Wood County Court of Common, please, and appeal our decision. Any lobby visitations? I apologize, the email I sent this morning had confusing dates. We are planning the workshop for October. And the idea is that if we have an agenda item, which I think we're going to, is that right, Heather, you know of one or not yet? The other one was November, wasn't it? Okay.
We don't have any yet that I'm aware of.
Okay, if we, if we do have an agenda item, we would meet at 6:00 in the conference room over here. If we don't, we'll do it at 7:00. Well, as soon as Heather knows whether we have any business before the board, we'll let you know which time that is. And please let me know if you want, I'm going to put together a little agenda. If there's anything that you want to discuss, please let me know and we'll get that on the agenda. I can tell you what I intend to put on there is practical difficulty. What does it mean and how do we, how do we deal with it? This whole thing about how the meetings run, our negotiations and how we amend motions or condition requests and that sort of thing. We did get some guidance from the city attorney's office on that, which we can discuss next month. And just some of those kinds of things. I have been doing some research. I've got some cases, actually, from around the state that deal with practical difficulty issues and talk about negotiations among the board. Actually, Jeff, one of them was talking about what you brought up about landscaping and can we tell them what variety of tree and that sort of thing? So that's, that's kind of where I'm going with it. So if you, if you all have anything else, just please let me know and we'll get that on the agenda and out in plenty of time before that.
Is there any way to discuss, because like that young lady came in here and to deal with a contractor that just didn't do their job? I mean, is there any way to kind of, Heather, to hold those people somewhat accountable? I mean, I know it's not the direct focus of us.
We're hoping to have someone from the city attorney's office at the meeting next month. So far, I don't think that's been committed as far as I know, but that's our hope.
Right, I hope so, too.
Have someone there. I think that's, I think that's important and if we can get that done, it'd be really good to have, have that resource available.
Yeah, we've run that on concrete work before, too.
Yeah, constantly. And it's, it's almost like, let me do it now and then ask for forgiveness as we go.
Great. Okay, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned. Thank you.